Now is six thirty P M. I'm Chairman Mike Curry and I'd like to call this Board of Selectmen Business Meeting to order on this twenty-six day Ash Wednesday of February twenty nineteen. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great, thank you, everybody. Okay, before we get into our administrative, our new business and old business for the evening, is there any public comment tonight? Any public comment? Hearing none, let's move on to meeting minutes. We have three sets of meeting minutes. You should have them in your packet as well as you were emailed prior. I took advantage of the email prior to look through everything.
Mr. Chairman Hawley has, apparently there was an update to the executive session minutes. I'd like to distribute those.
Okay.
If I might.
For the public, yeah.
So these are the executive session.
Yep.
She gets them back after.
They will not.
No, 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 these are, this is just, it doesn't have any content of it. It's basically saying, here's the non-public minutes. You went out, you came back in, here's what your vote was. That's, that was concerning negotiations.
Let me just get situated here. So I would like to make a motion to approve the minutes of February fifth, twenty twenty, and February twelfth, twenty twenty, to be approved as presented.
We have a motion for two, yep, I have a motion and a second for two sets of minutes for the fifth of February and the twelfth of February. Any discussion, corrections? Hearing none on the, the motion to approve the minutes of February fifth and February twelfth as presented. How do you vote, Jeff?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well.
I would like to make a motion to approve the executive session minutes of February twelfth as presented and to be released to the public.
Second.
I have a motion and a second for the executive session portion of February twelfth. Any further discussion? This is on the amended one we just handed out to you.
Yep.
Hearing no further discussion on the motion to approve the February twelfth executive session portion minutes. How do you vote, Jeff?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. Okay, that takes care of our meeting minutes. Mr. Terrence, any, any introductions of new employees?
We do not this evening, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Let me catch up. Okay, we have, this evening we have a committee appointments and vacancies for Economic Development Committee. And I believe we have both with us the, this evening, Ms. Culver and Ms. Murk. If you want, like to come up. This is a great day. It's always really, really super nice to have volunteers. I think we almost had too many volunteers.
Yes, almost.
For the first time in a while.
For the first time in a long time.
Yeah.
We've been waiting to fill the slots on this committee. We're very excited to have you both.
Okay, one, let's see. Okay, it's, it's, it's within the motion for which, which position they're actually.
Yes.
Okay. And Amanda, you are coming in as the Financial Matters Experience Slot. And April, you're coming in as the Real Estate, uh, thank you for that resume. It was a good resume in the Real Estate Matters Spot. Would you like to make any presentation or any words? Because we're just, we're, we're excited that we're gonna get this going.
I'm just excited that we're gonna get it going.
Sure.
I just, I think it needed.
I just have one question for Mrs. Culver.
Yeah.
I did notice that, and because I know you in the real estate world, that you don't have a lot of commercial experience. How would you go about, like, how would you go about if you needed some commercial help? How would you go about that?
But when I was asked to apply, like, to volunteer for the position, I did express that. I did wanna make that very loud and clear, that I didn't have commercial experience. However, I do have a good business relationship with a great deal of agents who do have experience in that aspect. And I have no problem reaching out to people and asking questions.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted the public to know that as well.
Yeah.
And I did, I asked for advice when, because she, I asked her and she told me that and I asked Hawley and.
Um, April's been doing this for a long time and does have a good deal of contacts within this community and outside of this community, also along with other vendors and.
Yeah, you can see that in her resume.
Yeah, she's a very impressive resume. Thank you.
I just have a question for us.
Sure.
How do we get a chair to that committee? Because there's been, there's been no activity that I know of, no action on that committee. So how do we get a chair? Or is it up to?
They have to appoint their own chair. They, they'll be their own committee and their own.
Just like we.
Okay, so my concern is the two people that are on it.
There are more people on it now.
Yeah, that they would somehow reach out? How do they get, how do they contact April?
That was gonna be my question.
That's my question because, say, Carter, sorry.
Well, upon us knowing that the committee has the potential for a quorum, we reach out to try to find a common evening that they're all available, come in, give them copies of the charge and composition, open meeting log, talk about electronic communications and use of their own emails, personal emails, and, you know, how to do that within the statute. They elect a chairman, we leave, they're on their own.
When you say we, you mean you and Adam?
The office, the office.
The office and Holly?
Well, we really means. Let's, let's be honest about who does much of that kind of organizational work.
There's no sense in having all this, doing all this work and having a committee without.
No, no, we, we, we'll pull, when a committee like this is organized and kicking off, we, we pull that effort together.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
I do, too.
And thank you for actually being proactive about putting people, you know, holding feet to the fire and otherwise, I think you've done a lot of.
How long, how long can you hear? Our town needs revenue. You know, and not do anything about it. And there are people out there in TV world that are sitting there right now. Come on, people, come out.
We still need other representatives, but we should not diminish the people who are sitting here before us. Who've come out to volunteer and we greatly appreciate that.
Thank you, Diane.
We're very excited.
We are, too.
I would like to make a motion to appoint Amanda Murray in the Financial Matters Experience Spot and April Culver in the Real Estate Matters Spot to the Economic Development and Industrial Corporation to a term expiring on June thirtieth, twenty twenty. And then you would be re-done. So it can only be done for a short term right now, but then it will be done for a longer term.
Yeah.
Okay? So I have a first.
Second, so we can't go to twenty twenty-one since only a couple months?
No, not right now, no.
All right, second.
Okay, we have a, a motion and a second. Any further discussion? I know we had another application, Hawley. Could that person, the other application be considered for the industrial development?
The only other spot is that low-income spot, and that needs to be appointed by D H C D.
Got it.
Terry did mention maybe we could have him as a ex officio, or I'm not sure what the parameters would be for that.
The reason I'm confused is because if, Mike, if you look at the top of that, it says a seven-member board, but there's only five positions. How come it says seven-member board with five positions? If you read that, I read that. Did you?
Because those are the five that are required by statute. I'd have to go back and look at the charge and the way it was written. But it would, I remember he is, which is not always spot on, is that there are two citizen-at-large positions. We can certainly redraft, make that clear for the board's next meeting. And then your other applicant could be appointed to one of those citizen-at-large positions at that point in time.
Okay.
And with five of the, I believe that would make five of the seven slots filled.
Yeah, we can't have an even number.
And should make, should make the possibility of making quorum for their first meeting pretty likely.
We still need the low income.
I was gonna say I can work on that if you need me to. I can.
If we wanted to, if you wanted to slide positions, I mean, we, we got it?
No.
No.
Because I could do accounting, like finance.
Yeah, Amanda's good for that spot. Because of her background.
Right where you are.
Okay.
But I can work on that if you need me to.
Mr. Terrence, you?
Before folks start beating the bushes for persons of low and moderate income, the statute is clear. They must come from a list that is applied to us first by Muck, which has not responded unfortunately, and now the Department of Housing and Community Development. So that letter will be going out to them in the next week, having failed to get anyone from Muck. And Greg Eaton has agreed, as has our consultant, Peter Sandborn, uh, Glenn Eaton, I'm sorry. As has our consultant, Peter Sandborn of Community Opportunities Group, who administers development block grant. They will both reach out and try to encourage D H C D to get us some names. So if they do have folks, if they wanna get us those names, then we can try to work it through the channel. But it has to come through on letterhead from D H C D.
Got it. Okay. Any further discussion?
Just, is that something you can do too? So you can work on that then, too?
I understand. On the motion to appoint Amanda Murray and April Culver to the Economic Development and Industrial Corporation Committee to a term expiring on June thirtieth of twenty twenty, how do you vote, Jeff?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well.
Thank you.
Awesome.
Awesome.
Thank you both.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Terry, Karen? Hi, come on up. You wanna take a look at that that was given to me right before me?
I read it.
Oh, you did, okay. Did you see it? Next item on the agenda is the public hearing for a new liquor license application for Crows on the Common. We've got Terry and Karen with us this evening. This is, this is a hearing, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
So you need to open it?
Yep. I'd like to open the public hearing for the new liquor license application for Crows on the Common. Is it a motion?
So moved?
So moved, second?
What time is it?
It is eighteen, uh, six forty-four. We have a motion to enter into public hearing. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Jeff?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
I vote yes as well. Eighteen forty, eighteen forty-five, we're opening the hearing. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is John Flick. I'm legal counsel to Crows on the Common. And we're very pleased to be here tonight to present, uh, what feels a very exciting step in commercial development here in the town of Templeton. Before we get into any substantive aspects on the application, I do have some supplemental information to provide. First of all, we have the green cards for the return on all the certified.
Chairman.
Holly said she'd take them.
Oh, okay.
And I, Mr. Chairman, I will provide you, there is some supplemental information on the financials as far as the, in the application, it requires a listing of how much money is expended on the project and where that money comes from. We have supplemented that information as well as providing a signed copy of the lease agreement and a copy of the reported mortgage on the property.
Okay.
It was seen to supplement the application with that information. As you can see from the application, it is, the, the purpose of this license is to provide all liquor, all alcohol license for Crows on the Common, which will be a restaurant providing breakfast and lunch only. There is not going to be any dinner service except for periodic special dinners, whether it's a craft beer dinner or wine tasting dinner or a private event or, or something of that nature. Those will not be regular events. This will primarily be a breakfast and lunch facility in the old country mission. It's a pre-existing use. It was, it had a restaurant in there before. That use is continuing. The entire first floor has been renovated at significant expense to the owners to develop that property. And we provided a copy of the plans. The entire building has been brought up to code. Sprinkler systems from attic all the way to base, to the basement. There are three egresses on the first floor. As I said, there is no actual bar, so there will be no bar service within the restaurant. It will be specifically for patrons who order from the table, drinks prepared in the kitchen and brought to the table. There are no plans for the immediacy for any service outside of the facility. So the licensed premises we're looking at is simply within the walls of the building on the first floor only. The second floor is being used as their private residence. It is secured. There is no, no ability for patrons of the restaurant to get up into the residence area. It does have separate external egresses as well. Everything is sprinkled. The owners will be living upstairs. They're not gonna be renting out that property. They've gone through the, 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 the application for the building permit. Most of the construction is complete. There, this is the next step in getting ready to open. They're hoping to open sometime in late March, early April, depending on the E B C C process, but I mean, they said they'll open without the liquor license if, if all else comes together. So we're happy to answer any questions that the Board of Selectmen may have, as well as any residents within the town. And we're looking forward to this opportunity moving forward.
John, what was your last name?
Flick.
Flick.
Yes.
Do you, do you wanna supplement anything with that, that presentation at all? How hearings usually work, it's a public hearing, so there's the, the proponent. There is any people against it that, that are allowed to speak. Then there are any questions from the board. Any rebuttals i- i- if, if that's the case, and then we close the hearing and then we, we make any decisions. So within that context, I just wanna make sure that everyone understands how it, the, the flow occurs. Thank you, John, for at least opening the presentation part of it. I think that was a good step forward with a lot of the details in it. But I certainly wanna allow you, anything that you might wanna add in to your initial presentation.
I think that.
If you could say, state your name for the record.
Karen Rose Ostberg, Crows on the Common, Karen Rose Ostberg. Uh, I think that.
That was important.
We have, I think you summed it up very well. We are not a bar. We will not be open for dinner to the public. We're not gonna be open until late hours. We don't plan on serving shots. We don't plan on having any kind of reckless behavior. We will do the occasional wine dinner, craft beer dinner, which would be inside. So there's no, it's not a bar. We don't even have a bar in there. There's no counter service whatsoever.
Nor do we have any desire whatsoever to become a bar at any time. It's, it's not what we're looking to do.
Mr. Chairman, how many people can you accommodate?
I believe a hundred is.
A hundred inside as well as the three-season porch.
So you will be using the three-season porch that was there?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
And barring, just barring the question, is that complete your presentation?
That's.
Yes.
Yeah, that's.
We're anxious to get up and running.
Yeah, it's been a long, very long build.
Yes, yes.
Okay, if that's the end of the presentation, does anyone speak in opposition of the, the liquor license?
I'm not in opposition of it, but I have a question.
Yep.
Can I ask a question? My name's April Culver, Templeton, obviously.
April, can I, can I just, just in terms of the back, back and forth, I know if, if it's not in opposition, I'll, I'll, I'll allow it. When we get to the questions, is that okay?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay. Just very quickly, the First Church of Templeton, Pastor Alt did write on your behalf. And we'll make sure that that gets added into the record, speaking on, on your behalf. Is there any, and I'll ask again, is anyone in opposition? Okay, we can lead off with, if, if the board doesn't mind, we can lead off with April's question.
My question would be in regards to your request for the liquor license. Will all of your staff be served safe, the certified, for the liquor aspect of it?
Still stealing her thunder.
And also, how is it that you're gonna monitor?
Tip certified.
Yeah, and how are you gonna be monitoring drinks counts?
Well, because we're only breakfast and lunch as well, and the server is, our, all of our staff will be tip certified.
Oh, okay.
Serve safe is for culinary, for the kitchen. So all of our, any guests, any employee serving alcohol will be tip certified, including myself, my husband, and our chef. I forgot the next question.
How are you gonna count drinks?
We, um, we, our building is on camera. Our whole first floor is on surveillance. And I'm the floor manager. I'm on the floor all the time, as well as our servers that are gonna be counting their drinks, watching for people that are served too much. I mean, I think that we're in Templeton and it's breakfast and lunch. I can't imagine, but. I've had a couple Grey Goose's myself for lunch. But I, we, it is going to be under constant surveillance between myself, we have a floor manager besides myself, and the servers are the ones serving the drinks to their own table.
And you're gonna have a way to track them?
Mm-hmm. Yep, we have a, we will be having an electronic handheld P O S system, point-of-sale system. So there will be no handwriting of, you know, your eggs benedict with a mimosa. It's all electronic. And we can monitor that entire table electronically by how many mimosas they've had or Bloody Marys. And you can see it on any kind of hand, the handheld device they have, and on a computer screen.
That's awesome.
And Karen's not gonna be stuck in the kitchen cooking. We've hired a chef. We're gonna hire several more staff. She will be a roving manager, constantly out and about, making sure things are done the right way. She's not going to be in the back constantly, roving.
So just to further clarify April's question, really, the, the server is your, your best line of defense because there's no other way to obtain a drink within your establishment.
Correct.
An alcoholic drink.
Mm-hmm.
I just wanna go to the, the board real quick. Does the board have any questions?
No.
Good.
You're, you're good?
Yeah, I'm good for now. It's April's. Took my question, but it was tip certified, not serve safe.
Both.
Before I, I, I open up any further questions, so management-wise, it sounds like you're, you're there twenty-four, seven.
Literally.
Right?
Yes.
All right, so do you ever foresee a time when, uh, that you'd be not on site?
Years from now when we've got somebody trained that we trust enough times.
Okay. We already talked about tips and serve safe. That was a great, an additional point. I think that any, anybody that, that serves the, the common good of, of you and the customer. But tip certification, certainly, this board, uh, puts a lot of stock in that. And that's really, really what some of the first questions that we ask, to make sure that people are, are, especially if your servers are the point at which they, they get an alcoholic beverage. So I hear that you have a plan for that. That's, that's certainly something that we are, are, have a lot of visibility. Our police department has worked with us before when we've had issues with that. Just, that's just where we come from.
And I think that's even more so that we can monitor electronically, that it's not somebody handwriting in a blood light that we can physically see on their handheld system, how many that the server has served that table to. So, yeah.
What are your hours proposed?
We'll be closed on Tuesday, Monday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, seven to three, Saturday, Sunday, eight to three.
And you said you have, your, your permits get you to about a hundred for occupancy? Having been in the, 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 the restaurant that used to be there, that only occupied half the space. Do you foresee any problems parking? Do you have a, a parking plan that, that can support that?
We are going to go off of what the parking plan was prior. To be honest with you, we can't afford to build a parking lot or anything.
We will in the future build more parking.
Yeah.
We're hoping to use the public library street, the Boynton Street. There's still parking on Baldwinville Road. We also are good friends with Kim at Country Bumpin' Antiques, where we're going to do a system where if she lets us use her parking lot, we'll give, you know, her guests twenty percent off.
Right.
If they come to us, she's got a parking lot that's huge.
I realize it's a tough question. It's not like it's a Walmart parking lot.
No.
And it's, and it has, you know, a grid laid out, and it was creative, I think, be- before. I would not, doesn't enter in my thought process tonight, but certainly it's a, it's an intervening concern that I, I certainly would have for that amount of, of people coming into, into Crows on the Common. I would definitely urge talking with Laurie Widda and possibly that Mike Bennett, that, he's the chief of police. Because you, you can gain a lot by that, whether it's ideas that you had or you wind up knowing what your left and right limits are for parking. Because ultimately, it's not gonna be your patrons that are gonna get, you know, get a finger in the, in the chest. They're, they're, they're gonna want to see if something gets out of hand parking-wise, they're gonna wanna work with you. So I would, I would be proactive about that.
We plan to.
We have some thoughts of talking to, I don't actually know who we talked to, maybe we need a Realtor. We would someday like to purchase all the land that's in front of our house from the town.
Okay.
Not that we plan to make a Walmart parking lot out of it. We would love to keep the trees and the grass, but to be able to, where her, where Gail and Glenn's old white picket fence was, at least be able to push that for gravel.
Yeah.
And do twenty parking places there.
Yeah.
But we need to have a professional survey of our property as the town's property. But if the town's ever looking to sell, we would be willing to buy.
At this point, we've expended all the money we can.
Understood.
In all honesty, we need to get open and start bringing some money in. Once that happens in the future, we would like to have some discussion about some of that grass in the front.
Great.
That you're currently taking care of, but not using, and we can discuss that later.
Yep.
You know, if it's just taking a strip, whatever we could do. At this point, we've expended all we can, Mike, seriously.
I hear you.
They heard you, baby. They know we're poor.
It takes a lot to open a business.
Right.
It takes a lot to open a business.
We have thoughts about extra parking. We just need to do it later.
Okay. And, and, and a lot of the, they have got, the enthusiasm is absolutely present.
Absolutely there. We're, I'm excited for you.
Thank you.
We're excited to have you in town.
You should definitely poke your head in and see the.
Oh, please come over here.
Oh, we can?
Yeah, oh, absolutely.
Oh, I'd love to.
Betty comes in all the time. Betty stops in all the time.
Oh, good.
All right, while we're still in, in our hearing, I have no further questions. Is there any further rebuttal? Yes, ma'am?
No, it's not a regular rebuttal. The only question about parking is having lived on the Baldwinville Road for fifty-eight years, it is certainly not what it used to be when we had parking on both sides. We now have the business that, that comes from down the road where they, it's, where they have wrecks that they haul off to different places.
On the block.
And they're going, and they're going every day. We have school buses coming when they change. It's not the same, it's not, you know, so I don't know how you could park on both sides of the street.
You can legally. It's not the most ideal situation. We can probably fit twenty-five cars in our parking lot. And every morning, we plan to move our personal vehicles out of our own yard.
Yeah.
To provide more parking. No, no.
You don't.
No.
You don't.
But as soon as we're able.
Oh, yeah. Oh, I, I understand. I just, you know, I have visions of these big semis.
And they fly down the road.
And there's only parking on one side of the road, not the, not the, not the right-hand. And there's only parking on one side of the road, not the, not the, not the right-hand side, having, that is no longer used as parking.
Right, we're hoping the library, the one-way street is a little bit.
That's another issue.
Yeah, just be, be careful with that.
Yeah, yeah.
Urge that you talk with, um, Mike Bennett and Laurie.
Yep, we are, we're in a, in conversation with them.
Okay.
You know, I'm sorry to hear that you're not gonna be cooking, I've been hearing you're a fabulous cook.
Well, I'll be executing it, but I will be physically scrambling the eggs. I'll have the recipe for it, but it won't be me, yeah. But this chef that I did just hire, I've worked with for the past fifteen years at Jibbit Hill, so, pretty, pretty good, he's solid. Thank you, though.
I just, those are the, I think those are the neighborhoods, the people who live in the neighborhoods.
Yeah.
And we have with the library, with the children's programs that go on, you know, it's just, it's just.
There's a lot of traffic there now, yeah.
Well, although we have, you know, the ability to fit a hundred people, I, I, I highly doubt breakfast and lunch will ever consist of that many.
Oh, you think?
No way.
I don't know.
I think come Easter, you're gonna be. That was a family tradition.
I think so.
Yeah, is there any further rebuttal?
I have a question.
Yes, uh, you have a question?
Yes, Charlotte Dugan, right next door.
Okay.
Um, will you be holding other events, weddings, et cetera, where alcohol is served, and will they ever be outdoors?
We can't serve, our, our alcohol will not let us serve outdoors.
Okay.
Um, so the yard is not gonna be an option. The only option in the future, and by future, I mean five years, is the front of our house where the bushes are, not the side door, but the actual front of the building.
Mm-hmm.
We would like to put some outdoor stuff there someday, and by that is five to eight tables. Um, if the liquor license lets us go five feet into that front part, that would be it.
But will, will you have other events then, besides the dinners and stuff, will you have weddings and things like that?
Um, I had an idea to do that, but then I don't want to.
So it could develop later on?
Um, I don't think so. I don't think that we want to use our side property, or any of our property for that.
Okay.
But when you sell your house to us, maybe. Yes, keep us in mind, on his card, yeah, see.
Seriously.
April, I got your hat.
I don't want.
We wanna buy your house.
Love for you to get out of this hearing at this point. So many questions at that point. Is there any further rebuttal, let's keep it to rebuttal, do you add a rebuttal, or?
Just a general comment.
Library is free.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm Jackie from the library, um, and I'm thrilled that you're here, and I'm excited to see what you've done. Um, I realize parking is an issue, it's often an issue when we have big programs, so.
I know, I saw that today, I saw that today for you.
And I just, I know with Gail and Glenn, we, we had a great, open lines of communication, and, and I just welcome that with, with you guys.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely.
Great.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jackie, actually, that was, that was a lot of value added, I'm glad you said that. Um, I will entertain a motion to come out of hearing.
Just, uh, one quick, one quick thing, uh,
I'll lay there.
I just, just a quick little comment, I'm glad that you are open to, uh, purchasing that area of the common. I believe it was last week or the week before, I was talking with the assistant administrator about looking into that piece of the common, and getting that on the tax rolls, and off the expense of the town of maintaining, so I'm glad to hear that you are, we don't have to go say, hey, you're willing to, and down, then when you get, going down the road to do that, 'cause I personally am in favor of doing that.
Let me know when you're ready.
Jeff would tell you that we're ready now.
Yes.
Um, we, we will have, so we're, when we come out, the, the hearing is for, yeah, discovery of, um, asking questions. We can deliberate it afterwards. Um, I'll take a motion to come out of, uh, public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to come out of the public hearing. Hearing nothing further, how do you vote?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
May I vote yes as well, we'll come out of public hearing at seven zero six, nineteen oh six.
Can I make my motion now?
Absolutely.
Oh, I'm sorry, thank you, I move to approve, um, the liquor license on premises for all alcohol for the restaurant, for Crows on the Common LLC at ten Baldwinville Road in Templeton.
I have a motion, do I, I have a motion and a second, is there any discussion? Terry, did you have?
Nope.
Okay. Is there any further discussion? Uh, I'd like to thank you for coming in for this evening, we're, 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 we're not done yet, but I'd like to, just during discussion, I'd like to thank you for coming in and answering a lot of the questions, some of them easier than others. And I definitely, uh, um, as you become part of our community, please reach out, I mean, Jackie's a hundred percent correct. Uh, uh, you just gotta know the right belly button to go to, to, uh, to, to find the things that you want to do. Uh, where, uh, as you could see at the beginning of the meeting, economic development, i- it, we're really, we mean, we mean it now. Uh, whereas before, maybe it was, it was a backseat, now it's in the front seat. Okay, on the motion that, uh, that has been seconded to approve the new on-premises all-alcohol restaurant liquor license for Crows on the Common LLC at ten Baldwinville Road, uh, Templeton, how do you vote, Jeff?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Can I vote yes as well?
Yes.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
I, I hope you find it, um, easier from here on out.
Karen, Karen, did you grow up in Gardner?
That's pretty good, we don't normally.
Rose yard mom, Rose and Larry, right, I've, I've been to your house.
I didn't wanna ask before I voted.
But I know your parents, you used to go to Sacred Heart.
Yeah, oh, great, great.
Thank you, Attorney Flick, that was a great presentation.
Thank you, now, now we can do what the.
Oh, did, uh, did you get your paperwork back, or was that a copy for us?
Was this a copy for us?
Okay.
Carter, can you get that to home?
Thank you.
Can we just, can we shake your hand? Really welcome, welcome to our community. Now, we appreciate you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Terry, thank you for coming in.
Thank you. Thank you, and definitely.
Thank you for sticking with it, 'cause I know it's been a, a little litigating.
I knew you was a little kid, didn't believe it.
Good luck to you.
Thank you.
I'll be poking my head in.
Thank you. Anytime, whenever you come by and check it out.
Okay, okay, great.
Yeah.
Really?
That was actually Glenn, not you.
Oh, was it?
Oh, yes, and I have the rest.
Okay, we just take a couple, uh, take a minute to, uh, reset, you're ready for the next, okay? Thanks again, folks. Okay, moving on, uh, to the next agenda item, it is a presentation for our fiscal year twenty-one budget. I believe the, uh, the presentation is being made by,
Carter.
Mr. Terranzini, our town administrator.
Yeah.
Glad we didn't say no.
They've been through a hard time.
Parking is gonna be something.
But they've been through a very difficult time to get to this point.
I know, did you see that, that's almost a million dollars there.
Yeah, I know.
Uh, so this is my fourth, I'm sure we're all hopeful, is my last budget presentation to you.
Who said we're hopeful about that?
I am at least.
You said you are.
Second there.
You're gonna miss us, you know it.
Um, so actually, I, I, I spent,
Some of us, maybe.
I spent part of my downtime this afternoon, uh, looking for my rental in the UK for the summer, so. I, I am looking forward to getting through this process, which hopefully will be easier than last year's. Uh, so, uh, again, we used, uh, the zero-based budget, in our opinion, I, I try to look at, uh, whether or not the department has justified, uh, what they need from the ground up, not just, well, I spent X last year, so I need three percent more this year. Uh, the focus of the budget, uh, you're gonna find that there's fewer major initiatives in here, uh, because we're really at a point, uh, where I think we need to, uh, just consolidate the gains. Most of the structural changes have been made, most of the policies have been put in place, there's, uh, uh, more to do, but the rate of change will slow down substantially. Uh, and of course, you are retrieved in the fall with your goal setting. Uh, so it's a seventeen million, six hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollar gross budget. Uh, we have budgeted seven million, four twenty-nine and change, uh, for education. Uh, that is the FY twenty base budget, uh, for Monty Tech and for the regional school district, plus the two and a half percent, which was settled, I think, two business meetings ago, as our methodology for projections. I do remind you that's what we budget, that's what we project. You are in a regional district, it is not a town school department. Uh, so those numbers are always a wild card. Uh, there is room, uh, because of the way the policy is set up on the overlay account, uh, that could accommodate some more money, uh, but I will tell you that it's effectively a tripwire, um, if you have to increase, uh, more than a extra one hundred thousand dollars. Uh, at that point, there's no way to do it through the use of the overlay policy or any other minor tweaking. At that point, you are back to real cuts or major changes.
Carter, may I ask, if you were to trip that wild card, how much would be left in the overlay account?
Uh, well, you can't go below a percent and a half.
So there would not be much left?
Well, there would still be the one and one-half percent that you have to have to operate, but you have to now cut town expenses. You have to cut.
Right, we would have to, okay, thank you.
So, uh, the general fund is nine million, eight fifty-three and change, how much is it up? Well, depends on how you view what the FY twenty budget was. Um, if you go from the base, that which was approved, uh, by this board, and by the town meeting, at the annual town meeting, uh, we're up about two hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars, or two point three percent. Now, you'll remember, in order to, uh, uh, deal with the regional school district's final budget, we end up cutting an additional seventy-one thousand, three twenty-two, seventy-one thousand and, and short change. So if you're using that as the benchmark, uh, we're up about two hundred and ninety-three thousand dollars and change, uh, and, uh, three percent, uh, or so. Now, forty-five thousand dollars of that increase, uh, is the placement of that general obligation bond, uh, from two meetings ago, I believe, um, for the Templeton Elementary School. Uh, you have one more, uh, step to do, but basically, the money we have for the bond anticipation, this note will approximate your principal and interest on that final. So next year, you're looking at maybe a penny, uh, more likely zero pennies, uh, in terms of increase in the tax rate. So, um, we're up about two hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars in that two and a half percent that we can raise. Uh, we anticipate new growth of sixty-five thousand dollars, based on that five-year rule that we, uh, we follow. Expect us to look just kinda like you wonder what that is. Unrestricted general government assistance, I'm not exactly sure who, uh, at A and F came up with that phrase with the legislature, but that, in fact, is it. Um, and excise tax, we were able to take up about twenty-five thousand dollars this year. So you have, um, two accounts that have gone down, the MART reimbursement and the regional school district. Uh, those amounts are faded out, they will not be with us next year. MART is a factor, uh, actually, a, a factor of our expenses, so the expenses are down, uh, similarly. The major cost drivers of that two hundred and twenty-three thousand, or two hundred and ninety-some thousand, however you wanna look at that increase beyond the debt, are the collective bargaining agreements and an allowance for merit and equity pay, uh, for our non-union personnel, fifty-five thousand dollars for the Worcester Regional Retirement System, uh, eight thousand dollars in electricity, you'll remember, the Templeton Municipal Light Water Plant, uh, used to give us the entire electric bill as part of the pilot, and that's being phased out, uh, in over the five-year agreement, uh, that Mr. Driscoll and I made, each year, we're picking up an extra eight thousand dollars. Uh, that means there's eight thousand dollars available more for capital, uh, but it becomes an operating expense, uh, uh, that we have to pick up. And, uh, we're now in the third year of building towards that fifty-three-week payroll, uh, as we, uh, uh, go to do that, uh, so you don't have that spike one year in which you have to come up with the extra week all of a sudden. And you don't have the liabilities offset in the interim years, but through accounting adjustments.
The Worcester County Retirement, that is up fifty-five thousand, right, that's not out, that's not.
These are all ups.
These are all, just, I just wanted to be clear for.
Yeah, these are all, these are all ups.
Up meaning costs us more?
Increases, yes, yeah. Um, there is, uh, a savings in two years, we think. Uh, this town adopted the early retirement initiative in the early twenties. Uh, you're paying about eleven thousand dollars and change for that, that will drop off. Uh, we think twenty-three, I'd have to go back and double-check. And so that ten thousand dollars drops off and helps that year keep your increase down a little bit. Um, there were, I believe, three or four retirees, um, that you've been paying. You've paid, uh, roughly two hundred thousand dollars to a family retire early. Uh, so, uh, you know, in terms of safety valves, we're always trying to speak to those. Uh, Diane, the overlay would still be legal, it would still, uh, provide the basics, uh, but after a hundred thousand dollars, education going up. The only other thing you could do is you could tweak the excise tax a little bit, but after that, you're into cuts in the town budget. Um, every year, we say, if you do have some savings, you see something you don't like an expenditure on, uh, our first recommendation is we prepared some, uh, restores that we would recommend, and it's the same one every year, basically, snow and ice, veterans benefits, and council. Uh, 'cause those are three that we generally end up backfilling, uh, every fall or spring. So, uh, I do wanna, this is, you've heard it before, but I'm gonna say it one, one last time here, uh, that the budget, I know by many has just looked at as, you know, well, we're spending this, we're spending that. But it really is the single biggest policy decision you make of the year.
Mm-hmm.
It lays out the services you're gonna deliver, how you're gonna organize yourself to deliver those services, and what resources you will give to those units of your government to deliver those services you want to deliver. So, um, you know, I encourage you to look at the budget as an omnibus policy document, and, uh, you know, make sure that maybe units are working together on something, and if you cut something, maybe it has an impact someplace else.
Correct.
There's not a, a, a great deal of interlaced, uh, activity like that, but it is something you, I need to ask you, uh, to, uh, keep in mind. Uh, so every year, we look at the workflow, there's some changes, we look at the organizational structure. Um, the major money initiatives by department, we have that thirty thousand dollars, uh, of tax levy for merit and equity adjustments. Uh, we have asked for an additional seventy-five hundred in the capital, in special articles towards the cost of sale for Baldwinville Elementary School. We had the initial fifteen thousand, uh, that was used to prepare the zoning overlays, uh, negotiate the several host community agreements, uh, prepare the, um, uh, in entering the negotiations with the original designated developer, unfortunately, they dropped down. Uh, we've got some money left there, but in, uh, talking with town council, um, he thought that it would be prudent to add that to the account. Uh, hopefully, the developer designation agreements and some of the other documents we have will still keep our number tight. Uh, but I would, uh, would follow council's guidance on that. Uh, at the fire, um, and EMS building, uh, we have two capital repairs to the roofs. Um, they'll give us another five, uh, ten years on, um, the rubber roof, fifteen years on the metal. These truly are patches. You need to, uh, these two buildings, uh, begin to deal with, where are you going to get the several hundred thousand dollars in ten plus or minus years that you need for a complete replacement? Uh, we're gonna face that on the senior center, which I'll get to, uh, in an amount. These are major expenses that your capital budget can't take as a hit in just one year.
Mm-hmm.
They're just too big, uh, unless you were to wipe out equipment and everything else. Uh, the, uh, clean burn furnace, which burns waste oil, uh, at the highway garage, um, that, uh, died last year, we didn't have money to replace it this winter, uh, so we saved money on replacing the furnace, we expanded some of that on buying regular oil. Uh, for the other furnace, it fell apart, uh, but that we propose to replace next year. Um, leafback, um, it, it, it's unbelievable, but, uh, well, let me just leave it at that, the current method is not, uh, Jeff's laughing in here, smiling along with you, I think we'll be a better way to put it, the current method, I had the same thing in the last time, where they rig stuff onto the, the tarps, and then push the tarps into the, the. and then push the tarps into the truck. This is gonna save you a substantial amount of money. Landscape trailer, a zero-turn mower, these things are really wonderful in cutting down on labor and a new truck body for one of the trucks. The Gilman weight, we are not licensed to do the pest control and the fertilizing and everything else. You'll find the quotation in your package. New library roof and repairs to the porch with the gift monies. That is pretty close to being ready to go out to bid. At the highway department, the replacement of the small roller, Bob's been really, I think, trying to do a good job and make those Chapter 90 monies go as far as he can. Rubber tarred backhoe, and Bob May will be with us fortunately during, Adam staffed that as well. The capital program, that $37,500 is cash plus the excavator and greater trade-in or an open market sale. So town council and I have been struggling a little bit with how to word that warrant article because we don't want to appropriate the whole $20,000, $125,000. And then if you can trade the things in, you really only needed 37.5. So that's, we need a little more refinement, a replacement of a six-wheel MS4. That's the stormwater management that we have to do. We're doing one-half of the drop outlets this year. We'll do one-half next year. That helped us keep the costs a little bit more manageable. Continuation of the street sign replacement. And Royalston Road, we're at 75% design. I think you were informed a couple of weeks ago on that. That was submitted to MDOT in early January, as I recall it. They're reviewing those. We're planning a neighborhood meeting sometime in mid-March to date everybody. We have a number of rights-of-way drainage easements, perhaps a small parcel or two that we need to own in fee. And you have to have all of that done under federal guidelines before you can actually go to bid. So step one is we have to do all the title exams, and they are extensive because it takes as much to do, you have to do the title exam on the entire property. Perhaps you only need 75 square feet. They're doing the title exam on the entire property. So I've talked with Tom. We're hopeful some of the basic work pulling deeds together and things like that, the man can help us with to keep those down. That's gonna take about eight months to do all of that. And by then, hopefully, the 75% design plans will be approved, and we can start appraisals perhaps at the fall town meeting, seek the supplemental for that. We're at hope for 2025. On the tip, I believe, I know Jeff's been going to some of the MPO meetings Adam has. They're at 2024 now, so my hope all along has been to be on the schedule for 2025, but to try to be close enough that if somebody drops out, they can say, guys, can you get ready a little faster? Could we pull you forward? But I do think you had another four years as long as we stay on track. Five's about quarter million dollar federal project.
Right.
Buildings and grounds, for those of you who've been in my office, you've been here. In fact, one day, I'm sitting there, and Sheila, the veteran service officer, sneezed. I said, "Gazootite," and she said, "Thank you."
Wow.
That is a challenge. That is a challenge when you're trying to have a personnel hearing, sensitive discussions on a legal matter. And so it's unfortunate, the walls were never insulated. So we'll do what we can within those dollars. The heat pump in the town clerk's vault, spent a lot of money repairing it last year, needs to be repaired. We really want to do something with the training rooms up at the Taboral Center. Fire station, these are call guys. They give us their hearts and souls, and we really want them to have a good quality work environment. Some de-icing cables. Now, the Green Community Supplement, you say, what the heck is that? And I'm not sure I have a great example in here, but we'll be going through. Yes, actually, I have one example in here, and when you walk out, you'll see some of the others. So they will pay us to replace the ballasts and the bulbs and everything else. But if this one cover doesn't match everything else, they don't replace that. When you get down to the end of the hall and you see the floor cracked covers, and a bunch of these will crack when you pull them off. And so we've figured there's probably about $2,500 worth of things that will need to do in addition to the $153,000. So we're left with a professional-looking work environment when all is said and done.
So the expenditure of that, the $2,500 is to basically prepare to make sure that we're compliant with that green initiative?
Actually, actually, it's an aesthetics thing. So that when the crack, when the shades, when the cover's down at the end of the hall, they're cracked, they take them off, they replace the ballast, they put the cracked ones back up, and we say, and they say, eh, that's not energy, that's because your covers are.
It's a supplement to the work.
Yeah, so it's just to try to leave us with a professional-looking work environment. There may be some offices where we basically strip them all out, you know, injure one whole road, that kind of stuff. They projected we'd save some money by adjusting some controls. Interestingly, they didn't give us the money to adjust the controls. But we still have to adjust the controls, so we need some extra money to do a few things here and there. So at the fire department, I know that the capital committee had hoped to replace half. We've projected replacing about a third. We've asked the Templeton Municipal Light and Water Plant to do that, and then to commit to doing phase two and phase three as well. And I've sent that off to Mr. Driscoll. We would do the second building with the vehicle exhaust system. And the third building, we think, is a better candidate for the federal fire safety grants because what they're most concerned with is the buildings where staff is there or sleeps there. The other two fire stations just didn't rank high, the chief tribe, but they didn't rank high enough, and it's highly unlikely they will. Replacing the jaws of life, several items there. New SUV, that, by the way, will most likely be a hybrid. We've come to learn in the last two days that the Green Communities would make additional dollars available to us to pay the delta between a fossil-fueled-only vehicle and a hybrid vehicle. So we're gonna try the first one of those, or we've planned for the dollars, and assuming we get those, will be the first ones. The fingerprint system was on your radar last year. We simply weren't able to access the grant funds for that. And we're responsible for replacing the animal control officer's vehicle. This would most likely be a late model used, replacing some MDTs. Those are the mobile data terminals and the cruisers. The body armor replacement, some firearms training, which you'll find spoken of in your book, and the computer upgrade. On the Office of Community Services, they are proposing in the recreation unit, a summer camp this summer, half-days for grades three to six. It starts on June 29, which means they need enough money to hire their counselors, train their counselors, have their coordinator ahead of time. So we are proposing $7,500 in the special articles to help seed that, get that thing off the ground. After that, it would be run out of the revolving fund, and they asked for a half-time, year-round rec coordinator. We really didn't have the ability to do that, but we put in enough money to get them through about five or six months so they can get their revolving fund, we think, a little bit healthier to carry that. On the senior services side.
Nothing extra for the taxpayer, but we're trying to help them to get bridge, bridge the gap.
Well, the seven-and-a-half tax levy is for the first five or six months, so the taxes would carry that. And then we'll have to see how they do and revisit it this time next year. And they may not be able to carry the entire thing in the revolving fund, and you may decide for $8,000, the expansion in the program has been worthwhile that you're willing to continue that kind of tax levy support based upon the expansion of the program you're getting in other areas. So on the senior services, I've talked with Jackie and I've talked with the chief, and I asked them to explore the feasibility of a Good Morning Senior Wellness Check. The area up north is replete with these. Essentially, they're run out of police dispatch in between the hours of depending on the police department, nine and 11, eight and 10. They place a call to the participants in the program, couple minutes, how you doing? Just, they're there, they're awake, they're alert. And if something seems off, they can dispatch patrol cars for a wellness check and then let senior services know if there's an issue and provide them with some additional support and assistance. In my community up north, the year-round population was only half of yours. Our summer population was about four times yours. But for the 4,000 year-round residents, we would have 15 plus or minus folks enrolled. So we really need to think about how many we think would enroll, what kind of burden that might put on dispatch and the like. But that is, in terms of dollars, that's a zero cost of program if we have the resources otherwise to carry it out.
Without impacting operations.
Yes, yes. So we're gonna spend some time in the coming year looking at the viability of that. From the Office of Development Services, Laurie briefed the planning board last night. This is what we spoke of over the past, I don't know, six weeks or so. We didn't have a number at that time, but the CPC has approved. We've gotta work, look at how we word it from council's perspective. We'll have to tweak that over the coming weeks, but the idea is to create an affordable housing trust which would allow us to access the CPC dollars. They can't be spent directly to develop a program, to preserve affordable units within day mill and similar projects in town, to review the zoning and regulation that we have with an eye to improving the chances of affordable housing development, making sure in-laws apartments are available. Some states have actually now passed a statute that requires they be by right in every single zone. So we want to take some time to do that. That's probably about a year-long effort. We've not had a chance to get it out to you today, but we did get from Chappa an email following up on the chairman's letter that y'all authorized, I don't know, maybe two months or so ago, that they're interested in whatever they can to assist us. At the sewer department, they have to start the payments for the Gardner wastewater treatment plant. They have eliminated a half-time position as a result of the sewer bills now being collected up here. We speak to indirect costs and when and how to recover those in the budget document. New transformer for the sewer plant, inflow and infiltration study just ahead of the curve, the DEP was getting close to this end.
What are the payments to the Gardner?
My recollection is about $50,000 a year, and I believe, and Bob McDonald will be with you as will Mr. Machete, Mr. Jolnuski, I'm sure, I believe that's for 10 years.
Okay.
It's coming out of the.
We'll have to double-check that.
That was always up in the air?
Yeah, yeah.
It was never any, no one could get to a number? No one could give us a number?
Oh, we got to a bunch of numbers, yeah.
Right, no one could give us a number?
Mr. McDonald, I think you're gonna find Jolly Nose's numbers. I think you're gonna be impressed.
I was just curious if you had gotten the number.
During the budget process.
Okay, thank you.
And a replacement of a dozer, this will be used at that price, but a replacement nonetheless. On cable, again, I suggest we fully funded it, but I have some concerns I've shared with you before and I share with you again. On the annual town meeting warrant articles, there's some amendments. There's an article authorizing you to sell the Baldwinville School. Please, everybody cross their fingers, get this round. Well, we got a good for last time, just they dropped down.
Right.
And an adjustment in the demand fees for taxes. Those were last addressed in 2008. They're $10, and they're not providing a real motivator. Plus, most people that the contractor can write it off at 10 bucks. You can't write it off at 15.
Can you explain that a little bit?
Sure, if you don't pay your excise tax or your real estate taxes on time, we can demand, and we mail you a demand which pay it, and we can add a fee for that. Unlike all of the other fees that can be set by the board or the officer, this has to be set by town meeting. And so we're proposing going from 10 to 15, which we hope will be a better motivator. Right now, we have about 3,000 people a year that we have to send these demand notices to. So anything we can do to motivate them improves cash flow and reduces workload here. You can charge 30, but Cheryl's asked us to go from 10 to 15, so we'll see how y'all think about that and what the meeting thinks about that. So what was not recommended, well, some major pieces of equipment, the sidewalk machine. And that machine is pretty much on its last, can't say legs, but it's at the end of its useful life.
It's a clearing machine?
It's the sidewalk machine. It's a multipurpose machine, the way it was acquired. You probably use Chapter 90 money, I would say, based upon the all-purpose machine, and that's what a lot of communities did. So it is the over-the-rail, over-the-guardrail mower, and it is the snow blower for a lot of your sidewalks, and it does some other things. And, yes, those things cost a lot of money.
That thing has gotten very little rest. For some past practices, it was used like year-round.
Yeah, so we think there's a better way to go. An over-the-rail mower that would go on a regular farm tractor or try to contract it out if we could fund the operational money, that was much better. We'll have that conversation, but that is a conversation you need to have with the community. There are a lot of municipalities, dare I say it, that have gone out of the business of sidewalk maintenance, winter maintenance. And Bob will walk you through the, he'll walk you through the pluses, the minuses, the costs. Buildings and grounds presented this year, over $900,000 in needs we could not fund. Half of that was at the emergency management building. About $85,000 was here. CPC has asked us to go back to the drawing boards, including the removal. Personally, I don't support that, but they've asked us to look at it, so we will. That was about $85,000, as I remember. Senior center roof is close to a quarter of a million dollars. At a minimum, I think we need to take at least $125,000 in '22, '23, put it in the capital reserve, and then you'd be able to, if you can get that much life out of that roof, then you'd have some money to actually tackle a thing all at once. Major problem there is not only that it's a rubber roof, which is expensive, but you've had extensive leaking, so the substrate, a substantial part of it, is gonna need to be replaced. And there's only so long you can put it on before you end up having insulation problems, mold problems, other kinds of things. Fire, airbags, vehicle criping, the PPE, personal protective equipment, washers, dryers. Chief tries for grants for these things, but for call departments, they're not as well-received. And the software at Development Services again. So, education, budget went, you know, for us needing to spend a million bucks at meeting one. Last meeting, it was, I don't know, $484, something, I forget the exact, $475, I'm surprised. Which is about $300,000 above where we want to. Last meeting, it was, I don't know, four eighty-four, something, I forget the exact, four seventy-five, which is about three hundred thousand above where we wanna be. Two hundred thousand above where we can be without cutting town services. That's just, it's gonna be a fight. And we'll have the same discussion every year. It's, the budget's only up two and a half percent, I mean, it's not, it's not out of line. OPEB, Worcester Regional Retirement System, health insurance, the indirect cost recovery. I'm hoping this is the year with DOR's support, I hope, coming out of the meeting report. That we can finally get to that continuing challenge on capital needs, infrastructure. So let me go back to infrastructure for a moment. One of the things that we're recommending, and hopefully this, Jeff will like this one. And I believe he'll be loved. Again, I've talked about it, I think for almost six months now. We are recommending that you have the conversation with the capital planning committee and the community to establish a second capital stabilization account for infrastructure. Sidewalks, roadways, bridges, drainage, the engineering there for. And you start to put some money into that. In twenty-three and in twenty-five, you have around a quarter of a million dollars of debt coming off. I know Jeff and I might have a little variation, we're not funded. But if you can get to that point, you can then have a conversation with the community about, we would like a quarter of a million dollars for roads. And yes, your taxes won't go down, this money is coming on, but your taxes won't go up. And that is the one override, when it is dedicated to a stabilization reserve like that, that can only go there. And if the town meeting abolishes that, that fund, the override goes away. There's an automatic trigger in it. So look at your, the debt schedules, which we'll give you in a separate document. You'll see when that fades off. And having some planning out there for two, three years, knowing where you wanna go. I think that, again, we may, we may differ a little bit on the methodology of getting there. I think in general, we're probably on the same area. There's the curve, you've seen it every year. The only good news is the curve is that in twenty thirty-six, you'll have money to start funding your OPEB obligations. So I mean, there is good news on that, Cheryl, I'll be dead.
You never know.
Well.
I don't plan on being dead then.
You know, we all may be, they'll look at how forward to the report of that year, Jeff. So looking backwards, items that we've addressed, that we did get those sewer receivables moved. Under discussion for, I don't know, twelve, fifteen years. Diane was a great proponent of this. We did the study, we showed the merits of it. We moved to bi-weekly pay on July one. And I am suggesting that once that transition is complete, you study the feasibility of moving accounts payable to bi-weekly as well. You do your payroll one week, you do the AP the next, and it just.
Yeah, that would be, that would be great.
Altogether, there will be resistance to it. But altogether, both of those moves will save you about a hundred and twenty to a hundred and sixty staff hours over the course of the year. Time needed for other things. So, March fourteenth, eight thirty AM, Jeff will not be snow plowing or salting that night. We put the entire burden on Jeff to make sure we don't have to go to the snow date of March twenty-one. Books are here, I know that at least there was one advisory committee member that got theirs earlier. We'll send the email out tonight that they're here. Holly will have this up on the web by sometime Monday.
That'll be important.
And when that is done, we'll send, we'll send a, an email out to everybody, letting them know that it's there. This year, we are not printing every section for every department. They'll be giving the link to the web and then print out what they need.
Carter, that's, it's such a huge thing to have that PDF out on the web because we wind up referring back to it. Can, could you take questions?
Certainly, be happy to.
April, did you wanna ask a question?
Yeah, I have a couple.
Oh, a couple.
You're only allowed one.
Ask away, I love it.
They, the recreational programs.
That's the one that's off your head.
For a budget in regards to that. I was, I, for some reason, I don't know if it still exists, but I thought that the school was already doing programs for the summer months and they were charging. I wanna say it was like four hundred dollars to participate in like science program, musical program, am I?
Yeah, those are more like educational camps, more thematic camps is my understanding. And Scott Dill will be able to better explain that. I, I don't have the kind of detailed response.
I got a little bit of an overview.
Is there a need for both, I mean?
I had a little bit of an overview, he wants to charge eighty dollars. He does wanna charge for that camp, it's not gonna be free. And then that money, I thought, by what you were saying, was gonna start a count for them.
It goes into the revolving fund, that's right.
So that they can start building up and being autonomous, is that what it was? Self-sufficient.
To answer your question, yeah, I think there is a need. When we, when Adam had his Westfield state, the study was done, there, there's a definitely a need out there.
There's a great need in this community for that.
I'm just saying, like where there are already based programs.
Some people can't afford that.
This is athletic, basketball, baseball, not math and science.
No, go ahead.
So it's at Gilman Way, it's outside, kinda like a revised summer playground.
All right, okay.
And Scott Dill will be here and answer the detailed questions on that. I, I won't know all the nuance about it and don't want to miss it.
She had two questions.
Yep, go ahead.
Oh, now it's a few?
Few means more.
No, she said a few.
Open the door.
The new animal control truck. What is our deal with Winchington, are they contributing to that?
Our deal is that we pay them a fee, which next year will be twenty-six thousand dollars for the personnel. And our obligation, they pay the balance of the wages and all of the benefits and everything else. Our obligation is to provide a vehicle. That's in the agreement.
We can't just use an old police cruiser with the cage already there?
You can't even use just somebody that likes animals anymore unless they have been through the training and become a certified animal control officer.
Okay.
The cage has to fit and it's gotta be.
And they can't, yeah, it's.
In April, a lot of the capital stuff that's come to us, I, I mean, not to sound like, for this presentation, they've already gone through that. Capital planning's already gone through that, they made their, their recommendations to us. So that's, that part of the Carter's brief is almost informational. And it's in, it's in a tab in here, we're like, yep, that's what we signed on to do.
Yeah, and I'm just asking these questions so that I have a better understanding and some of the public too, because.
I do understand what she's saying, 'cause we used to have, you know, the SUV first was with the fire chief for three years. They went to my court officer for three years, then it went to the animal control officer for three years.
Then it went out the door.
Up went Buffy.
Yeah, they shifted vehicles.
You can't do that anymore.
I'm just saying, where the cage is already there, why not?
Yeah, we can't.
Okay. My next question is sewer bills? Now, I come from the city, and when I lived and owned a home in the city, our sewer bills were part of our tax bills. Why aren't we doing that?
One step at a time.
Part of your tax bills?
I paid taxes and it was my sewer water taxes, all one bill, paid through my mortgage, that was it.
The water bill.
The water I know will never be, I get that, Clinton? Lancaster, that area, Worcester, it's all included.
The town of Clinton, I'm sorry. Different organizational structure, different form of government.
But I'm just saying that I think that's something that we should look into, if it's, if they're doing it, it's obviously possible.
I would just say baby steps, I mean, we got this far.
We finally got this far.
Okay. Sidewalks, again, where I come from, it's always the residents' responsibility to clear the sidewalks in front of their homes.
A lot of our sidewalks don't have any homes in front of them. It's, it's commercial, like all in front of Baldwinville Road, like there's nobody there to, to do the sidewalks. It's all residential, it's not all residential.
If I might, every community organizes itself differently. And this is a discussion the community will need to have. And in some communities, it's been, nope, we're going out of business. And we're not buying that machine and there's gonna be a bylaw that explains who is responsible and what happens if you don't do it. I lived in one community where if you didn't do it within twenty-four hours, you're fine. Worse than that, we sent a snow blower through to clear it up for you and sent you the bill. So that is a conversation the town will have to have. And the town may decide, you know, through a debt exclusion, a capital exclusion, or just making it happen by depriving other capital needs. They wanna buy the machine and it's gonna continue. And that, I encourage Bob to make that as public a process as possible and to involve the community as much as possible. And the community will weigh those things out.
My street doesn't even have a sidewalk.
My children walk down autorhythm.
Right, my street doesn't even have a sidewalk. I'm like, what would I shovel?
I shovel my road.
That's a conversation that will need to happen, has no cost to have the conversation and that will happen in fiscal twenty-one.
Yeah, we'll have to have that conversation.
Yeah, and then my next question is general maintenance on town owned buildings. Do we have separate maintenance accounts for like the school? And things of that sort that are owned by the town? For like capital expenditure, like, like repairs that need to be made? Are, are we just approaching that as we run into an issue?
I don't understand your question.
The high school and the middle school are not owned by the town, so those are completely the responsibility of the regional school district.
For instance, Baldwinville was so run down, it was owned by the town, there were no funds aside to maintain it. Is that what we're doing with the new elementary school? Or are there funds put aside to maintain that building?
There is no sinking fund or annual set aside for that building at this point in time.
I spoke of that before that school was built. And I asked if we were gonna do anything like that, but it never went anywhere.
That's something that should be with that.
And it is with the lease.
Right, and we have a lease with them and the lease will address some of that.
Correct.
I will say that one of the recommendations that we made, the board did recently increase its target for how much money to put aside in the capital stabilization account. And we recommended, and I, I think they were on board with exploring, how to move it to a percentage of the asset base. So instead of saying, well, the budget's nine million and we wanna have two percent of the budget. We would say, we own fifty million dollars worth of real estate and we wanna have two million, two percent of the real estate value set aside. So that is a discussion that we will need to have.
I just know that when the school budget had come up last year, they were looking at what we had in our stabilization account. And if we can say, you know, a percentage of those funds goes towards this, it's really not in our stabilization. I guess, like, reallocate it, like, define the use of those funds.
The school had a limit, anything over five thousand dollars, they could come to the town and ask for money for repairs. They never did it. They never came to us, they took care of it themselves. That was in the agreement, and that's still in the agreement.
Okay.
But they don't come to us, they just take care of it themselves.
But did they really take care of that building on, in Baldwinville?
No. But they, they didn't have the funds to do it either, and we don't really have the funds to do it either. So everybody kind of knew everybody's situation. So it just kind of went along as it went along. And that's, that was everybody's, that was everybody's, I mean, based on the people that I spoke with and being on the board here. Can you imagine them coming to us with a twenty-five thousand dollar bill and saying, I'm only paying five thousand dollars of this? And here, select board members, you have to pay the other twenty thousand dollars? And where would we get that from? I mean, that, that was really what they had the right to do.
Actually, in two thousand and twelve, Jeffrey was here. The town got a bill for a little over ten grand for some work that the school district had done at Baldwinville Elementary. And they just said, here. And it was one of those things, is it worth the fight? To say, well, we'll only do this and you're responsible for that, the, the town paid it.
Okay, I was not aware of that.
Paid for that. That was the one that I saw myself.
Was that for flooring? Was that for flooring?
No.
I remember something about flooring.
It was about five separate little projects and they, two thousand here, twenty-five, they piled it off.
Quite how it was supposed to work.
Gave it ten, but.
That's not quite how it was supposed to work.
So it's, but that is a conversation beyond tonight.
Right.
But one, two have.
But that's just information for you to know.
I know, and exactly, we're talking about the budget and you guys are working on the budget, so.
April, do you have anything else?
No.
Oh, okay.
That's my weekend reading.
Very simply, that, the, the oil burner, is that a public service or is that just done in-house?
I, no, we procure.
The clean burn furnace.
We, we procure that, I think the firm's over in Greenfield or Turner's Falls, if I remember right. Does that sound right?
The documents in the book.
Yeah, and, and the quotations for just about all of these projects are in your cap.
Okay.
But that's bid out, we don't, we don't do that work in-house.
Yep, and when we talked about the affordable housing, the, the money set up, set aside by the CPC or the CPC funds? That's not for units, that's just for a study.
The seventeen, oh, the seventeen-five will buy you the legal work and a review of your zoning, that's all it's gonna buy.
Understood, but it's not seed money to try and, got it, I understand.
It would hopefully get you a entity that can legally access CPC monies. A review of your zoning and regulatory system that you could take to your next annual town meeting. And hopefully, a program in how it could be administered to keep those units mobile.
We're moving forward on it, I just wondered if we had jumped.
The seed money for that first buy at the town meeting of twenty twenty-one.
Okay. Stone Bridge and, is it Main Street?
Stone Bridge, yes.
Do we have any provisions within this budget?
No, we have thirty-five thousand dollars from the fall, step four, stone bridge engineering. Step one is to reapply, now that we know what they're, the way they reviewed our last application. We'll apply for the culvert replacement program to hopefully take part of that. The balance, excuse me, the monies will get us to bid in permitting so that we can hopefully go out to bid in the fall and have a firm construction number at that point in time. Main Street, two hundred thousand, we have to secure the engineering on that, that's, that's on us. And we're hopeful that that would get us through enough design, twenty-five percent design and permitting so that we could perhaps apply for the mask works grants this coming August or September. But there are no, Main Street Bridge is probably a two million dollar build. Stone Bridge is probably another two twenty-five. You, you won't ever have that kind of capital money in your budget without either substantial grants, a debt exclusion, something along those lines.
Understood. Any other questions for Carter?
If there is, in between now and the clear, bright sky first budget here, that Jeff is arranging for us.
Oh, can I just?
If you can shoot them out to us ahead of time, we can get them to the department heads. They come in better, better prepared and help you get through that day.
For the nomination of the citizen of the year?
We'll, we'll go into it and see what they have. One final note, I think Diane had something that she wanted to discuss about the budget.
Yeah, I just wanted to state for the public and for the board that I have taken the override off the table. I've done a lot of talking to people and I put it out on Facebook and it was met with a resounding no. So if, I'm not gonna put it in front of the voters if it's not gonna be met with. Um, so, if, I'm not gonna put it in front of the voters if it's not gonna be met with, um, some great support. So, it's, um, it's just, I spoke to the chief, um, and there was not, um, he felt that it would not pass. We had a great conversation, and he just feels that at this time, it is not the right time to ask for an override. So, it is being taken off the table, so it is not, um, in this budget book. And I thank you all for allowing me to, the time to speak and the time to explain it, but at this time, now is not the right time for an override.
Thanks, Diane.
Thank you all.
Okay, uh, I'd like to move into next agenda item, um, opening nominations for the Citizen of the Year. Adam, are you briefing that?
I thought you would, and we can certainly speak to it if you'd like.
Could you, yeah, could you give me a timer on that?
Adam?
Thank you.
Good evening, Adam.
Good evening, how are you?
How are you?
All these chairs here, I mean. Doing well, uh, you have the supplementary, uh, documents provided within your, uh, materials here tonight. Uh, as you know, this was, uh, started, uh, when I was doing my listening tour, and this is a great opportunity for us to really, um, get somebody and move forward with putting the plaque up at, uh, Town Hall and having the, all the years on the placard, if you will. Um, and this will give people an opportunity to nominate, and Holly did a great job putting together the format which to do right on, uh, right through the web, uh, or paper, whichever way, if people are not
Mm-hmm.
accessible to the internet, 'cause I know that's a, that could be an issue, and I know Carter was, was working on this internally as well.
And we'll take it by carrier pigeon.
Right, however, people can do it.
But at lea- at least we got the process in place, it's moving forward, and, uh, then we will have somebody where we could then, at ATM or annual town meeting, uh, award the Citizen of the Year.
I'm very excited about this.
Me too. This, this will flow with our employee recognition, where we have those three employees that we recognize, and then we'll have a volunteer of the year. And, uh, I think the chairman, uh, made a great point on the fact that Templeton, now more than ever, just, just tonight, between April and Amanda being on the EDIC, uh, you're seeing a lot more interest in town, and, uh, I, I commend both of them for taking the time. Amanda was on the Capital Planning Committee as well, and I served with her in that capacity. So, I mean, we have people that not only serve on one board, but we have people that serve on multiple boards in town, and they are volunteering their time, and this is certainly the least we could do to recognize them moving forward. And at least the town will have a process in place where we have procedures that are followed, and we can recognize the efforts of one person and have it on, uh, a schedule.
Right.
And because of this board adopting that policy, we were able to do that. And I commend not only the staff for all their work putting this together, but the Select Board, or the Board of, the Board of Selectmen, for making this become a reality.
Well said, Adam, so we've got, um, the application here, it's about, uh, four pages long. It's for Citizen of the Year Award, and, uh, as Adam and Diane said, this is a pretty big deal when you consider this wave of volunteerism. It's really, it's, um, it's an incentive to take part of your community, you know, in a, in a, in a, an agenda item, or actually, our next agenda item, when we talk about our mission statement that we'll be voting on tonight. It's about our values in the community that we, um, that we try and push out with something like this. And I'll read right from the, the, um, the, um, first page of the award. This award is given annually to an individual, a pair of individuals, a group of individuals, a community group or nonprofit corporation, which has made a significant contribution to enhancing the quality of life of a subset of the community or the community at large. Um, essentially, that's what I just said, it's be, it's being a, a part of your community, and someone else recognizes it, and they said, you know, this nomination form puts forward a lot of, a lot of details, the conditions under which this person really made our community better. So, I think this is fantastic, um, this'll, I haven't, I didn't see it on the website yet, it might be there.
Um, we won't be doing it till after we get past tonight.
Got it.
And, um, uh, given a couple of days, what we didn't think of when we put it together, given a couple of days to get it posted, we would be posting it, um, for a response by March.
Twenty-sixth.
Uh, actually, we wanna extend it a few days.
Okay.
Till the last day of the month.
All right.
Uh, the policy calls for it being out there thirty days, and we wanna add a couple of days for what it takes us to get it up, up on the web.
Um, is this a fillable document, or?
It will be.
Great.
And there was many, we, between, uh, the staff on whether to name Citizen of the Year Award versus Volunteer of the Year Award.
Right.
Unfortunately, uh.
I love the sound of it.
I pulled the, I was on the wrong side of that one.
I like Citizen of the Year.
It really says a lot about being within your community.
Yeah.
And it, in, elected officials and employees are not eligible for this award.
Correct.
And, um, just so the public knows that.
Yeah, that's important.
And, um, you know, but it can be anyone that you think of who's really contributed greatly to this community, or, like Mike said, an organization, a group of individuals, you know, anyone.
And it'd be nice for people to have that plaque just hanging up at their house, you know, tell their family about it. I mean, because going to the core values of the community, them, of the four villages, and, uh, it really demonstrates their ability to lead.
Yep.
And doing it without seeking selflessly.
And they get, uh, public recognition, they get a nice plaque, um.
Yeah, they'll be recognized at the annual town meeting. Which is really, it's a great honor.
It is, and it's a good thing we're doing, it's a positive thing, and it's something that we could take pride in.
Well, I love it, I like, I think there's a lot of good work in here on the application process. It's designed to do what it needs to do.
I make a motion to open the nominations for Citizen of the Year and to close the nominations on March thirty-first, twenty twenty, at four thirty PM.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any further discussion on the Citizen of the Year nomination packet? Hearing nothing on the motion. On the motion to, um, open the Citizen of the Year nominations and to close on March thirty-first, twenty twenty, at, at sixteen thirty hours. How do you vote, Jeff?
Sure.
I don't know.
That's a positive response, uh, Terry. Terry?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
And I vote sure as well.
Four yes.
A resounding yes, I love it.
It's a positive response.
I got issues, okay?
Okay. Thank you very much, Holly, and thanks for your, uh, presentation on that. Um, let's move to the next agenda item, which is our mission statement. I have, uh, in front of us the, the, uh, redrafted mission statement, um.
Did you wanna read it, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, I was gonna read it out loud, I just wanna make sure, because it's got the strike-throughs and stuff like that, good night, Amanda.
Night, Amanda.
It's got strike-throughs and everything, so.
Thanks again.
Uh, bear with me if I wind up going slow during some of it. Um, in my, my best Sean Connery voice, I'll do, no. Templeton's town government strives to promote transparency and improve quality of life, and sen- enhancing a sense of community and preserving the core values of our four villages. We are committed to fostering respect, public decorum, and hospitality for a caring community. Your town government supports initiatives that create a welcoming and compassionate environment for residents, businesses, and visitors alike. We endeavor to provide excellent services through a responsible and accessible town government focused on the public good. My drop?
Nice job.
I move to approve the mission statement as presented.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Yeah, I'll second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the mission statement as presented.
Sorry.
Feel another sure coming on. Any further discussion? Hey, on the motion to approve the mission statement as presented this evening, how do you vote, Jeff?
Aye.
Terry?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. Nice job, everyone.
Thank you, Adam.
Thank you.
We have a mission statement.
It will be up on the web.
Thank you.
And the Facebook page.
Okay, um, and last, on our, uh, agenda item for this evening, Jeff had asked for a, uh, discussion on deleting chapter nine, article five, uh, for the Veterans Advisory Committee.
Not that I like talking in front of people, but. First of all, I'm not.
I'll read that.
I'm proposing to put an article in front of town meeting to abolish the Veterans Advisory Bylaw. And. I don't like saying this, but I, I am a veteran, and I'm, I'm not proposing it because I don't like it or someone else doesn't like it. I merely think it is unneeded added bureaucracy that we're putting on veterans who may wanna assist the community, including the Veteran Service Officer. They have not posted, I have not seen a posted meeting of the Veterans Advisory Board in quite some time. I've looked on the, uh, town's website, and the only individual listed under the Veterans Advisory Board is Mike Uvarde, and that's been since two thousand eighteen, when he first got appointed on it, and he was reappointed last spring by this board. I've talked him with the Veteran Service Officer, I've talked with Mike Uvarde. I thought he was gonna be here tonight, but no biggie. Uh, but I've talked with him and the Veteran Service Officer, and they are for this. They s- they seldom have a quorum, they end up just, you know, talking about stuff. And this came about, um, there's Massachusetts General Law, chapter one fifteen, which deals with veterans' benefits in the state of Massachusetts. Uh, it was created back around the Civil War, I think, and we are one of the best states in the country as far as providing for veterans.
Agreed.
And one fifteen, section eleven, it says that there may be an unpaid Veterans Advisory Board in a town. It's not required. The only time that a Veterans Advisory Board is required is if you belong to, and this again is outlined in Massachusetts General Law, chapter one fifteen, if you belong, such as Athol and Orange, two of our comparison communities, they belong to the Northeast Quabon Veterans District, it was activated in about two thousand and six. I served as Templeton's representative to that when we belonged to the district. Uh, I think I was, uh, two thousand thirteen, I was the rep, two through fourteen, before we left the district and went back to a standalone. Uh, and part of the issue was, we weren't represented well, and our veterans are not receiving very much.
Yeah, Mr. McGurk wasn't here.
So, if you're a, if you're a member of the, of a district, you have to have a Veterans Advisory Board. Otherwise, it is just voluntary, you do it if you want to, it's not required. Unlike, uh, a regional district, this, our Veterans Advisory Board has no input on the salary or expenses of the Veteran Service Officer, no input on, uh, what the Veteran Service Officer does, her salary, expenses, how much money we put aside for the veterans, none of that. In a veteran, in a regional district, they do that. We're putting, in my, my, my opinion, a- a- again, as a resident and, and as a veteran, uh, I think it's added bureaucracy, I, I know the intent, I, I believe, uh, you know, to put it out there, to, to, to put it on, and we've done the bylaw twice, the first time we did it, and then it was redone again, just years ago, um. I just think it's unneeded bureaucracy, and it puts requirements on veterans. If a couple of them wanna get together, you know, now they're under a quorum, the open meeting law, they gotta keep post-to-post meetings. I, I don't wanna get veterans and, and put them in trouble, however, they're an appointed committee of, by a bylaw, and membership and everything is put out by the Commissioner of Veterans Affairs in the state, per Mass General Law, chapter one fifteen. If you create this voluntary unpaid board, he sets the who serves, no town employees, no appointed ones, you have to be veterans, this and that, he sets that out. We're supposed to, they're supposed to post an agenda, just like Board of Selectmen, they're supposed to post an agenda, the time, the date, the place, all of that, meeting minutes, the whole nine yards, all under the bureaucracy of the open meeting law. And I think it puts, puts the veterans in a, and any resident who wants to work on behalf of the veterans, meet, bring issues to the Veteran Service Officer, come in here, the people that came here for the park, veterans with that list of people, they're not on any board or committee, they're just residents who got together and said, hey, we'd like to think about doing this for the veterans. So, I would propose the town meeting, uh, and I would ask that the board put this article on there. Uh, I could've did a citizen's petition with ten signatures, but I, I wanna bring this to the board to make the case for it. Again, the, the, this Veterans Advisory Board, it's like, it's like window dressing, they have no real authority. They can meet, get together, uh, if they don't have a quorum right now, they, they, they can't vote on anything, they're, they're locked in by the formal rules of a, of an appointed board.
If this comes to town meeting and is dissolved as a bylaw, would they just go to Sheila? Or repealed, would they just go to Sheila?
They, they do that now anyway.
They do it now, that's what they do.
If veterans wanna get together still, and I've talked with Mike Uvarde, and he's, he, he's in favor of this, they can just meet as, as residents who happen to be veterans, they can meet with the Veteran Service Officer and say, hey, you know, local veterans, we've been talking about this, we'd like to address this, this, uh, we wanna make or represent, you know, a suggestion on this or that. It's, again, this is.
Without having a law.
Without having a formal committee.
Jeff?
Yes.
Could you tell me which bylaw this is, please?
It's, it's, um, it's chapter nine, article five, under.
So, that is our bylaw?
Yes, correct.
So, I make a motion to the board to, um, put on the warrant, chapter nine, article five, um, to be deleted.
Or, or yeah, to ask the town meeting to repeal this.
Ask our, right, to, to put on our warrant, um, to what Jeff is proposing, to chapter nine, article five.
And just, a- again, it's not, I, I'm, I'm a veteran, I'm not against it.
So, I have a, I have a motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second discussion, now, now, now you can continue.
I agree with you, Jeff, I, I think you're absolutely right, and it's added bureaucracy, and it's proba- it's not needed.
And it's, again, it's not just, I mean, it's my personal viewpoint, but the Veteran Service Officer agrees with it.
And Mr. Uvarde?
He led, Mr. Mike Uvarde on it, and others, uh, it just frees them up.
That's what I.
They haven't been having a quorum, they haven't, you know, they haven't posted meeting, they're, they're.
Okay.
And some of this is, well, I don't, you know, they don't get town business or something, uh, maybe that's, some of that's on board's fault for not informing them, hey, you know, when you get on a committee, this is what you have to do.
So, I think it probably got left there because we used to be regionalized, and we're not anymore, and we've been a standalone for, since, what year did we do that?
I think in two thousand and fourteen.
That might've been the first year that I got on the board.
I think when John, when John Kaplis approached the commi- and I, and I was for leaving Quabon, for having been on the advisory, that advisory board.
Okay, so that might've been my first, or it might've still been in the, I can't remember if I was onstage or offstage, but I, I think I was on the board.
You were on then, you had just come on with the special election, I think.
Right, so.
But, yeah, that's when we left.
That's when we left, right. That's when we left, right.
John came forward, and I was on the board in a hundred percent in favor of doing that.
Absolutely, and we've done well. So, I'm, I'm, I've had theirs.
So, the purpose, nine nineteen purpose, the Veterans Advisory Board shall meet no less than quarterly to consider matters brought to its attention by the town's Veteran Services Officer or other town officers or employees, the general populace, and of its own initiative pertaining to the health and well-being of the town's veterans. That's the purpose. The rest of it, like you said, Jeff, is all administrative. How, how do you organize yourselves? You gotta post meetings and blah, 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 just like any other board or committee. What I'd like to focus in on is the purpose. And I think there's, there's historical for what, what it, when we broke away from Quabbin, and John's vision of having a robust veterans capability within the town, that was arranged, and it was added in. It was, it was not as it was before. And I, and I can tell you that because I was the advisory board chair for many years, along with Jeff. So, purpose wise, I got, I have two things for a discussion item. Purpose wise, when we did meet, and when we did have quorums, we did discuss initiatives pertaining to the health and well-being of the town's veterans. I think that there was a lot of value added by doing that. Because I'm an administrative guy, I made sure that we had post minutes, and that we had administrative oversight for it, and we had our challenges, whether it was quorums or even our own personnel following what you're supposed to do. But I want to keep to the task of, what is the intent of having a, a Veterans Advisory Board? Jeff said tonight that you really need one when you, when you are regionalized. I agree with that.
That's ma, I mean, it's mandated by the law.
I, I agree, because that's where you identify shortages of services, and they did. Someone coming just a, a, a day a week, or every other week or something, that is not service to our veterans in the community. So, I can, I can get on board with what we're saying, and I haven't got to my second point yet, but I can get on board as long as we're preserving capability. If she, if, if we do not have enough people or veterans within our community that feel that they can make a difference by being part of the Veterans Advisory Board, a formalized group, not just having coffee at a restaurant, you know, quarter mile down the road, but actually a formalized capability. If we can get that, if we can have the same level of service and awareness, I'm okay with that. My second point is what is the harm, I, I definitely see it here in, in the, the language, and this is, you know, maybe a, a, a change for, or a tipping point for me. First thing it says, there should, there shall be a Veterans Advisory Board consisting of, and, and you know the rest of it. It's that part which makes it very final to me, like, you're gonna have this. If it was like a, an optional thing, like the state law discusses, I would say I want to keep it, because it, it allows us flexibility to, to organize this thing when we, when we see fit, when we need it, and the, and the mechanism for what would trigger that. But the fact that it's, it's, it's mandating that there shall be a Veterans Advisory Board, I guess that, that's where I wind up, probably agreeing with you to the point where, why do we have it? I, I'm for, for the five hundred-ish veterans that we have, that we think that we have as a roundabout number, it's a populace that needs action and capability. If this does nothing for it, then. Under, under my watch, I made sure that it had purpose and that we had something. If it's fallen away from that, I'm, I'm done.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm optimistic that if we take away some of the constraints, you know, of the government. Me speaking personally, as a veteran, I, I don't do lines still, I just haven't gone over that. I don't do lines, I don't like waiting, I'm impatient to start with, but I don't like, I don't do lines, and I, formal stuff, I just, you know, things like that. I'm hoping that if, once we take the formalization away, veterans will be, feel more apt to get together, to talk, and, you know, we don't have to do all of this, check all these boxes off.
But why would this restrict, you know, whether this was here or not, why would this restrict them? If we don't even get people to go to it in the first place, they're not going to this, how else are they gonna muster?
People don't want to join, if you join, or if you get on this, now I got a commitment, I gotta be at the meeting, I gotta be at the meeting, I have to be at the meeting. And we all know nowadays, time and time and time. Perhaps, and I, maybe I'm full of baloney in thinking this, or stating it. But, you know, if I, I don't have to be there. Well, if I make it, I make it. If I don't, hey, you know, I'm, I'm not gonna, you know, meet the, the coffee hour, the get together at the Legion or wherever, because you're not under that, I gotta, man, I gotta go, gotta go. And then you say, well, you know, I can't commit all the time, so I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna join. I, I just.
Like you've said before with overrides, whether you agree with them or not, your ability, or our ability as a board to basically say, to talk through the merits, and then put it to the town. I, I can get behind that. I, I understand where you come from with
I'm only asking for it to be in front of them.
I think from all the things that I hear around town, and from veterans that I know, you have a robust, you have people reaching out, and you have, you have a much more robust service here, and.
I see what you're saying.
People, people want to come, and you don't need the bureaucracy.
Yep.
And that's why I'm for what Jeff is saying, and that you don't, I feel that Sheila is reaching out, and John had reached out, and you have reached out, and that people are speaking to one another. That's what people say to me, that they have no problem coming in here, and I don't think that you need this red tape. And I think, you know, what Jeff is saying is true.
I think the veterans' park, the group that came in here, the sig, the amount of signatures, what was it, like seventy-five or something, something like that, they, they did that without, you know, formally going to a, a meeting and stuff.
Right.
I just think, it's something that, for whatever reason, it's, it doesn't seem to really be working. And, again, it, it's, it's up to the town, because it's a bylaw, and if, you know, if they, the town meeting says, no, we're gonna keep it, I say, okay. But I just think it's an unneeded piece of bureaucracy, there's just not, it's not accomplishing what the intent was. And like a lot of things, and people volunteer, you start off, you know, going good and stuff, and then it gets, I think maybe it gets a little monotonous, or it, it was just, a lot of different things nowadays. People, you know, work here, there, blah, blah, it's not like the old days when you had more free, you know, availability, and you were more lo, people were more local and stuff.
I have more expectation, I, I will, I will feel that I would have more expectation of our Veteran Services Officer if I didn't have some kind of liaison. And I think of like the all boards meeting, and, and a report on veterans, I'm gonna have more expectation on our Veteran Services Officer.
I also don't see us joining a regional again, because we've done so well, being on our own and taking care of our veterans. I really don't see us going back to that. We are so well taking care of our.
My thought on that is, if you have the right person who's willing to work two hundred hours a week for forty hours pay, it's a way to go. But if you get, if, if you don't get that person, and you're five, six towns, and they're just like, eh, yeah, yeah, it's just.
Right, it didn't work.
That's my thought. And, and no, it wasn't, veterans were not.
It wasn't working, we were not taking care of our veterans.
I don't know how the agent is now, I don't, I don't know, I've never met her, but.
She's amazing.
I, I don't know for the Northeast Quabbin Regional, but.
Oh, the other one for the, oh, for the region, I've never met her, but.
But, that, that's my thought is, unless you get that individual that is really, I mean, gonna put all that time in, it's, it's a money thing that works fine, but it, it doesn't serve the people they need to serve.
Is there a cost?
Is there? No, there's no cost. I mean, we already pay for cot of education anyway. Let's just do a quick standing check. Even, regardless of what we decide, is, can, we're still within the window to add warrant articles, correct?
The warrant is yours up until the moment you sign it, and I carry it down to the town clerk. When I put that warrant in her hands, that's the moment at which you're done. There's no point of return. So, this opening of the warrant and closing of the warrant's really kind of a fiction. That's for the citizen petitions. The warrant is yours, certainly.
Do you need me to repeat my motion, or do you want me to?
I don't, I pretty much gleaned it. I'm just writing it down for Holly, if she needs to.
And, and that's all I'm asking is to, to get it in front of, because they're the ones who have to decide. It's, it's not up to us, it's up to town by law.
I had nothing further, or other questions? Do you have anything? Sir?
I live over on Sand Road, okay? I don't know if you know what that is.
Not off the top of my head, I'm sorry.
Okay, it's over by the Gardner Line.
Okay.
It's a five hundred foot long right of way. But for some reason or other, the town keeps considering it, not a right of way, but a private way.
Oh wait, I'm sorry, is this on the veterans?
No.
I, I'm not, we're not open to talk any, any other discussions.
Oh, veterans, yeah, I'm a veteran.
No, no, but are, do you have any discussion on the, on the bylaw?
Oh, no, 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 I'm sorry, I thought we were gonna, whatever.
No, but if you had something like that, your time would've been right in the beginning.
No.
Okay, all right, thank you, sir. All right, any further discussion? Or if you had any thoughts on the bylaw? I don't think he does. All right, so. On the motion that has been seconded to add a warrant article calling for the repeal of chapter nine, article five of our, our bylaws, how do you vote Jeff?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
I vote yes as well. Mr. Terenzini?
If agreeable, I, I knew this was coming up, we'll keep it on our list of things to do. If you wouldn't mind, we'll get past the fourteenth and produce the next draft of the warrant before we add this, rather than reprinting the one we just handed out tonight.
That makes sense.
And Jeff will keep me on my toes.
Holly, do you?
I will try.
You probably gleaned what, what the warrant.
He's been waiting the whole meeting.
Huh? I thought he wasn't here. After, after our meeting, I'll take down everything he has. I mean, I, I.
I'm sorry.
Yeah.
I just feel bad.
I do too.
You waited the entire meeting to?
Yeah, I already talked to him.
Okay, yeah, please, that's perfect. I, I don't want to not address it, but that's not, that's kind of out of, out of order.
He missed it.
I get it. All right, so that is the end of new business. We do not have any old business. We will move into board and staff member comments, please.
I don't have anything.
Is that all I needed to say? Okay, Terry?
I'm gonna skip it now.
Okay. I have some brief comments. It really come, it stems from the discussion of the, the override, and the override suggestion from, for the police officer. And, again, what I saw was the start of polarization within the community. No, you know, all caps, all, no overrides, and then, you know, people would talk about service, but overwhelmingly, Diane, I did see that people were not in favor of it. And so, my, my, my staff comment tonight, that I'd like to share with you and, and, and the public, is, we cannot be, that it is, it is okay to be against an override, but we cannot be short-sighted as a community to say that we will never have another override. An override is not an evil that comes out of some black book that they dig up under the state Capitol and, and start doing voodoo dances around it. It is a capability that is open to us as a community, if we have something that we need to be able to fund. And people should think of it that way. We have done excellent things as a community, and Terry, I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, but it is a fact that we will carry debt. At any given time, we will carry debt within this community. To get down to a responsible level of debt, I agree with you. I think that we need to do far better, and we, we do carry a, a high burden of debt. But I guess my, my, my take, my point, or my takeaway, is that we must consider all of the tools necessary to us as a community to be able to grow and build as a community, and have different avenues that we can explore to work on our infrastructure. Several times tonight during Carter's presentation, we're, we're not in a place where we can outright buy an ambulance. We can outright pay for a two hundred thousand dollar roof or, or otherwise. Until we get to that, and I know Jeff has got some really forward-thinking ideas on how to do that, we can't afford to think that we just threw, threw away some of the tools in our, in our, our tool bag for that. So, when I see comments out there about no override, I, I think it's very short-sighted to say that it, it could never happen again. A no override situation will, will stay in people's mind until it's something that they care about in their community. A piece of that infrastructure, a bridge, a school, a department, uh, uh, any number of things that we can think of as a community that we would need to fund, until it becomes personal, of course I understand that sentiment of no more overrides. That's all I have to add. That's my, my comments for tonight, and if you, if you have questions or rebuttal, that's fine.
If I could just add to that, regarding an override, I think an approach to take, and there are some communities, I think it's Arlington, that the Finance Committee actually puts this together for this, are, instead of reactive overrides, like, oh, we need this, we gotta have an override. They actually plan and discuss, this is our budget, it's gonna go up two and a half percent, you know, our, our levy is gonna go up this much, this is our levy, how much room we have to, how many, much money could we do an override? You know, do we have three million, ten million, whatever that money may be. So, they put out foot forward, we're thinking of an override in two thousand twenty-five.
Right.
This debt comes off, this comes off, and this is the reasons for it, and this is what we plan to use it for.
Right.
You know?
I think that's.
That's, I, I, I think an approach that's maybe worth, that's worth exploring. And it, it will take, it's not something you're gonna do in a week or a month, but I, I, there are some place Finance Committees, Selectmen, they actually plan on it, and they say, you know.
Right, just to take it off the table, I think, is a mistake as a tool. We may never have an override again, wouldn't that be great? But I'm, to, to, for the community to underst, to think, whatever comes out of anyone's mouth or office, or whatever the need, is that that shouldn't be ever considered, I think is very short-sighted in your town, will wind up suffering in the long term.
I, I just, let me just say that I've had a lot of discussions, and I didn't make, I didn't make the decision to ask for an override, and I didn't make the decision to not have an override harshly or rashly, irrationally. So, it's.
I, I, I agree.
It was my decision to come to you with an override, and I'd like it to be my decision to take it off the table. And please understand, you know, there was just a lot of negative support, and, you know, like Carter said, you have to have a plan, and you lose a lot of credibility if you put it out there and it doesn't pass, and I would prefer that, I think this board has a lot of progressive ideas, and this is my, my last three months, actually, and I would prefer that if you have more progressive ideas, that you do this in the future, and I did have a lengthy discussion with the chief.
Yeah.
And.
It's still an unfunded requirement in my book. It's, it's something that, that the public safety needs, and it's.
I think that this town needs to understand that, when a couple of people spoke to me in person and online, that this isn't about twenty-twenty, I always have to be thinking a year ahead, and that we will not have an officer, they will no longer be working as partners, they will be working alone, and that we will go dark, as a reality of the situation, and that we are putting officers at risk. And that to think that our town, nothing will ever happen here, that's very short-sighted. And, but it's, this is the way that it is, and, again, I'm taking it off the table. And, I mean, if you all, I mean, again, I'm one member, and I just don't, you know, based on my discussions with the chief, and based on lack of, you know, support from all ranges of age and socioeconomic status, it's just, I, it's just not gonna be the year for it. Please feel free to have a conversation with the chief yourself. And he'll be right, honest with you. I mean, in the very beginning, when I first went to him, the answer was no, and I had to have more of a conversation with him because he thought that we couldn't sustain it. And I had to have more of a conversation with him because he thought that we couldn't sustain it. But we could have something catastrophic, um, happen. I mean, the school always asks for more money. And we have to figure out a way out of that. I mean, and that's just the way that the state sets us up. It's not anyone's fault, period. It's not anyone's fault and who knows where we're gonna be at, um, right now.
Thank you, Diane. Um, speaking of first responders, did you have anything?
Table it.
Okay. Speaking of sp- our first responders, the Memorial Congregational Church, uh, the United Church of Cr- uh, of Christ. At a hundred in Bolleville, no, that's their P O box, I'm sorry. Wrote a letter to us and addressed it. It's, uh, it says, dear sirs and ma'am. I'm writing on behalf of the Memorial Church of Bolleville to invite you to a very special service Sunday, April twenty-sixth. To recognize and express our appreciation to first responders in town. Our churches felt a special need in these tumultuous times to honor and thank all those who work in these vital areas of our service to our community. Our intention is to orient our regular service at ten that morning around recognizing very special work that you do in honor for your service into our community. We will also hold a light luncheon following the service and you and your, your families are enjoyed to, uh, invited to join us. We hope as many of you can join us for this important tribute. The service will last about an hour and luncheon is, uh, appended. We hope to see you there. That's ten o'clock, Sunday, April twenty-sixth. Thank you and blessings, Reverend Richard A. Jones. And I know, yeah, and I know that that's been put out and on a couple of different social media outlets. Okay, um, Mr. Terenzini, is there a potential request for executive session?
There's no need this evening, Mr. Chairman. I'll, I'll brief some of you, uh, of fun.
Okay.
Can I make a motion to adjourn?
Have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Second, all in favor of adjourned?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. We are adjourned at eight forty-five.